Okay, folks, let's get started here. It's 6:30 and tonight we have a couple of action items. We've got a subdivision on Lansingville Road and then we're hopefully going to finish up with the solar. And then, Joe, I think you're going to give a presentation afterwards?
Good.
Okay. So I think that's all we have right now on the agenda. So let's go ahead and start with the bushes. Come on up to the table again, please. And so, let's see, we've got to do a public hearing. So I'll ask for a suggestion to open that up.
And who will we open the public hearing?
Dean one, two. Deb second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the meeting's open. And any changes since last time, folks?
No.
Okay. And then, there was one, we talked about it last week and I forgot, I apologize. That small lot, is that included in that acreage?
Yes.
It is included. So that's a separate tax parcel, correct?
It has a tax number currently.
Right. So John, don't we, John Z, don't we have to alter this to include both tax parcels and consolidate both?
Let's just place a condition on the approval that the laws are consolidated.
Both lots are.
Yeah.
Right, you're going to merge them both, that's your request, right?
Yep.
Both, the new split and the old existing small parcel.
Yep.
And so then what we'll do is we'll just, we'll issue a letter out of our department clarifying that, you know, just this resolution, clarifying that conditions.
Okay, so we're good with that?
Yep.
So any comments from the public on this subdivision? Okay, board members, any comments? Questions? Concerns?
Is there a format question? Is the map comes later on or that was given last time?
We have, the map is on file.
Oh, great. Very good.
Okay.
I moved that we close the public hearing.
Second. Dean and Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. So you want to go ahead and do the short form, you mind?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Short environmental assessment form. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area CEA?
No.
Number five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Number six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Number seven, will the proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies?
No.
B, public-private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Number nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna?
No.
Number 10, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Number 11, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
Okay, so I guess next we'll entertain a motion for negative environmental declaration and approval of the subdivision. So Larry, one, second?
Tom.
Tom, second, and I think you're going to take a call, agree?
And this is as amended with both parcels consolidated. Correct, conditioned upon the whole parcels being consolidated.
Tom?
Yes.
Sammy? Yes. John?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And Al.
Yes. Okay, folks, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Now his real complex.
Your car is parked here.
Will medicine work?
Sure.
Guys, am I coming up? Okay, and could you state your name and your relationship to the project, please?
Chris Koenig with CT Mail Associates, consultant for the applicant.
And is connected with Jeanie Ford.
Fellas, any changes from last time we spoke?
No changes to the site plan except for the standard notes we added per T.G. Miller's comment letter.
Right.
So we submitted back to the board a response to their comment letter which was dated June 26th. And we went through line by line, each one of their comments, provided responses, and made appropriate updates where needed, primarily with regard to the SWIP. They had a couple of comments on soil decompaction, where that would take place. So we addressed those comments. They had some questions about the lease parcel and site control and maintenance of the vegetative plantings and maintenance of the access road. So we addressed all that in an updated operation maintenance plan, which was also submitted back with that submission. So in terms of the actual, you know, the project itself, no changes, no updates from when we last met last month, just some notes to address the comments from the engineer.
John, Z, is the town okay with their response to T.G. Miller?
Yes, we've had several reviews and responses and the applicant has addressed all of our considerations. Even so far as you got a one-day turnaround time, Chris, which was pretty impressive.
That might be a record. And how about anything with Guy legal, as far as, is there anything out there that's outstanding?
There are no outstandings at this time.
All right, fellas, then, and so I believe you guys responded to the environmental form. These are your comments, correct?
That's correct. So we submitted, and this was the last submission for the June meeting. Prior to that meeting, we submitted to you a draft applicant-prepared part two of the secret form, the one form, as well as, you know, a narrative associated with each question. So eighteen responses for your consideration.
Okay. And board members, did you get a chance to look over? Okay. So any other questions before we get into the environmental form? Board members?
I had a question about, I think in the part one, the depth of water table and a depth to bed rock. Was this actually measured or?
Yes, yes. So we did a geotechnical analysis of the site and we're about three-quarters of the way through providing that report. But we did do investigative drilling on the site with a typical geotech analysis with a split screen sampler. So we did, we did see this.
And the bedrock is greater than five feet and the water table is greater than three feet?
So it confirmed our assumptions. When we filled out the form, that was the assumption we made based on existing mapping and our knowledge of the area, but that confirmed.
So I also had a question about the vegetative buffers. I was looking at the site next door and they have a vegetative buffer that right now doesn't look like it's buffering a whole lot.
Yeah, understood. So we proposed something different than that. Took feedback from the planning board. So we changed, were you present at the last meeting?
No.
Okay, so last meeting we introduced the new concept, which was to remove the Norway spruce as per the recommendation of the county planning, apparently some of the basis species in Palphits County. And we basically stuck with the white spruce plantings to provide some, you know, at day one screening, for example, of a buffer. And we also put arrowwood viburnum shrubs, which is a flowering shrub, sort of in the interstitial space between each tree or between each group of trees. And then we also added a shrub willow hedge around the fence line itself, which does thrive well in upland soils. We have looked into that and some research. It's actually some four or five pole stars developed by SUNY ESF and Cornell University, which provide great screening at low cost and tends to grow pretty tall pretty quickly and sort of propagates on its own. So we did some research there and feel like that would be a good fit for providing probably a 20 to 25-foot height around the fence line, right? So that's in the site, in the setbacks, so that's at the fence line. So it'll be two layers, two different kinds of screening. But we're not proposing cedars that are planted on the Jerry Smith Road site. So there's no cedars.
And then double row next to the neighbor bit to the north?
That's correct. And then the rows, trees to the north on that property line is staggered double row with 10-foot spacing with arrowwoods viburnums between each, in the space on the front.
These are, the white spruce are five to six feet if planting?
We said five feet.
Five feet.
Yeah, that's kind of what's available, but, you know, it's a tree, it's a Christmas tree, essentially is what it looks like. And they do quite well, I think, in a lot of different environments, the spruce. But we wanted to put something different around the fence line that grew a little more quickly and provide a little different context and texture, just to mix it up a little and not have this, you know, a monotonous-looking plant and plan.
And when do you expect to break ground?
That's a question for Nathan, but tend to getting approval and then we're hoping sometime this year in the fall.
So you think you'll have it done before winter?
It won't, it'll be done next year.
It'll be done next year.
You'll start this year, but it won't be complete in the next year.
Correct.
So and as far as the trees, you're probably then putting them in the springtime is what you're anticipating?
Yes. Yeah, whatever is the best for them to thrive. We don't want to plant them and then they die. You don't want to plant them either in the summer, things like that, or in the winter right before freeze. But there's a couple of steps, you know, after site plan approval, this is sort of just one benchmark to getting the project completion. You have to go through additional engineering and procurement of materials, building plans, additional studies up for the site.
And you haven't done, you haven't finished finalizing the tax, right, with the ADA?
Correct. And then pilot, financials, it's all, there's a couple of steps beyond this, but this is kind of the first step to the next group of things. And then also pertinent to this board is the stormwater plan and the final site test. Since the town is within a support community, we have to submit the revised SWIP or any updates we've made back to the town, code enforcement officer, to accept the SWIP before we get our state permit. So you're going to see it again, the town's going to see it again. We can't just go to law enforcement.
Board, any other questions? Folks, anything? John, anything?
No, I would just kind of walk the board through secret. It's a type one, as we already discussed, a full environmental assessment form. The applicant kind of ran through it. They drafted an expanded part two, so answering all the questions, you know, in the part, addressing everything in our form. I've reviewed that and concur with the applicant's findings.
Okay.
Areas where there were possibilities for small impacts such as stormwater, buffering, things of those nature, I think that the applicant has adequately addressed in their submission to this board.
Okay.
And I've addressed that in my draft resolution as well.
Okay. So I'll start out with the highlight one, two, three, and four. If it says yes, then go and we'll expand all those questions, I believe. If it's no and everyone agrees, we don't have to go through every single line. So I'm going to ask for some participation if I could. So let's start out with number one here, impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction, non- or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. And it's checked yes. So let's go through it. Sandy, would you mind going through these?
Aye.
Start it.
Part two, sorry.
Yeah, part two. The proposed action may involve construction on land where depth of water table is less than three feet.
No.
No. Proposed action may involve construction upslope of 15% or greater.
No.
No. The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface.
No.
No. The proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material.
No.
The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases.
No.
No. The proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment of herbicides.
No.
The proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard.
No.
Okay, thank you. So we're okay with one, let's go on to number two. Let's see what we have here. Number two, impact on geological features. Proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of access to any unique and unusual landforms on the sites, cliffs, dunes, minerals, et cetera. And the box is checked no. Are everyone okay with that on the board?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go on to three. Impacts on surface water. Proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. And it's checked no. And I believe there is, on the parcel, there is some wetlands, but not close to the site. Is that correct?
That's right. Yep. We had those delineated last year in our work.
Okay. Any questions on that, board?
No.
Okay, three, let's go on to four. Four, impact on groundwater. Action may result in new additional use of groundwater or may have potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or aquifer. And it's checked no. You okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
There was some discussion in the information that passed back and forth between Lansing and Grattan on the potential runoff for some of the chemicals that were used to treat the surface of the panels. I think that that was discussed between, when the town, the two towns were talking about it with the developer there. Is there any issue with these panels?
No. Nope. There's no hazardous materials in these panels.
Okay. Okay. So let's see, where were we? We were on, we're going to five. Impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. It's checked no. Good, we're good on that? Six, impact on air. Action may include a state-regulated air emission source. Checked no. We're all okay on that?
Yep.
Okay.
There's no generators or anything on site, no batteries.
Okay, seven, impact on plants and animals. Proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna. Checked no. There might be, but it's small impact, right?
Yeah, we're not proposing any tree removal at all, not a single tree, except there might be a dead tree on the road, but there's nothing, there's no tree removal, so it's a safe.
Let's see, that was seven. Let's see, we're on eight. Impact on agricultural resources. Proposed action may impact ag resources. And it's checked yes. John Al, you mind reading these for us?
A, the proposed action may impact soil classified within soil group one through four of the New York State Land Classification System. No or small impact.
Yep.
B, the proposed action may sever cross or otherwise limited access to agricultural land. No or small.
Small.
The proposed action may result in the excavation or compaction of the soil profile of the active agricultural land.
No. You're still road.
G, the proposed action may irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultures, either more than two and a half acres of located in agricultural district or more than 10 acres if not within agricultural district.
No.
No. Yeah, that's a good point.
E, the proposed action may disrupt or prevent installation of agricultural land in the system.
No.
F, the proposed action may result directly or indirectly in increased development potential or pressure on farming.
No.
Well, it might be have small, but it's not.
The proposed project is not consistently adopted municipal farmland protection plan.
Okay. Thank you, John. Nine, impact on aesthetic resources. Land use, the proposed action are obviously different from or in sharp contrast to land use patterns, proposed projects, scenic aesthetic resource. And it's checked no. And I think we're okay going through these, right? Glancing through these. There are similar projects within half a mile, so, okay, let's go on to 10 then. Impact on historic or archaeological resources. Proposed action may occur in or adjacent to historic resource. And it's checked no. We're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
And just so the board is clear on this, as part of the stormwater pollution protection plan, the applicant had to provide a letter of no impact for the shipwreck.
Yeah, we saw, it was.
Got it right here.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, 11, impact on open space and recreation. Action may result in loss of recreational opportunities or reduction in open space as adopted on the municipal open space plan. It's checked no. I mean, it is, it is going to reduce open space, but it's smaller, no impact, correct? And I think no is okay with this. We okay with that? 12, impact on critical environmental areas. Action may be located within or adjacent to CEA. And it's checked no. Okay, I will just come up on the research, right?
We don't have any critical environmental, that's an actual designation.
That's an actual designation. 13, impact on transportation. Action will result in a change to existing systems. That's checked no, I think that's true.
Sure, real quick, Al.
Yep.
You might cover it last, but glare potential. Just the topography of Lansingville Road being higher on one side considerably than the project. I read through the comments of T.G. Miller on what you repaired saying that it's unlikely there's an anti-reflexic coating on it, which is great. But if for some reason there's a few accidents and later on the project is a problem, could we have a line there about glare retrofitting or something or?
Well, the panel space south and Lansingville Road is about at least 20 feet below the elevation of the proposed solar farm.
And so, and then on Jerry Smith Road is along the north side to the panels or the opposite?
Yeah, that's on the north side, the panels are going to the south.
Yeah, it's, I just, there's a potential there.
No, it's a good point. It's a good, no, it's a good point.
Good point. Yeah, I appreciate that, John.
The lighting reflects, I'm sure we've all seen the sun rise at a certain angle on a road that has, it obviously, we're not, it's.
So how many projects have you guys been, you done last few years, similar with the same type of panels?
Our firm has done probably a dozen.
Similar type of panels?
Mm-hmm.
And you have no problems on those with reflection?
No. It's never really been an issue. That's kind of a, something that came out of solar laws that were drafted years ago where glare used to be an issue. And nowadays the panels are just constructed differently where it's not shiny glass, there's that AR coating. It's essentially tempered glass, like an automotive glass with the coating on top. So and the rest of it is anonymized aluminum around the frame and the posts are galvanized steel. And that's essentially it and that's what you got. But we're also providing a good amount of vegetative screening. So, you know, does it 100% block the view?
No.
Well, 100% block the view, but provides that vegetative buffer to what we believe is mitigate any potential issues, although we don't feel like there will be any issues.
We need to be traveled. We're going to look this up.
John, the only place that I've ever seen an issue with that is Turkey Hill Road.
Right.
So if you're traveling north on Turkey Hill at the right time of day, I've only seen it, and I travel that like all the time, and I've only seen it once when there was a specific sunset that was glaring off of those panels.
And maybe it's not.
But they're lower than the road and they're on the west side and you're on the east side. So, yeah, I get that that could be an issue, but.
Is there a certain vantage point from Lansingville Road?
I don't, I don't see it here.
No.
Yeah, I guess it might have to be refracted multiple times or something which is, you know.
I think that the site would have to be lower than where Lansingville Road is and this is the opposite.
So when you look up Lansingville Road, we've actually did a profile, an elevation profile when we first submitted this, you'll see the first couple of rows of panels on the fence line and then you'll see the, hopefully the nice bushy willow hedge there in front of it. So it's going to be higher, so you'll look sort of on the underside when you look up.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Back to you.
All right, good. All right, let's go on. 14, impact on energy. Action may cause an increase in use of any form of energy. So no. Okay. 15, impact on noise, odor, light. Proposed action may result in increase in noise, odor, or lighting. And the box is checked yes. Christine, you mind reading the three or five there?
Sure. A, the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. No or small impact there.
We're concerned with the clicking is one of the ladies. We felt that wasn't going to be a problem. Have we discussed that already?
Yeah, we submitted back information we had from the manufacturer and gave you, you know, what we believe to be the case.
Okay.
And I think there was a willingness there to work with the neighbors if they would want the reset time changed potentially as well.
Right.
Yeah, there's never an issue.
Okay.
B, the proposed action may result in blasting within 1,500 feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home.
No.
No. The proposed action may result in routine orders for more than one hour per day.
No.
D, the proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties.
No.
The proposed action may result in lighting, lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions.
No.
So you're not having any lights on the property?
No light.
No. Okay.
Thank you, Christine. All right, 16, impact on human health. Action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. And it's checked no. Larry, you brought up some concerns, we just talked about it, right? Anything else? Board members on this one? Okay, we're good with no. 17, consistency with community plans. Action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. And it's checked no. Are you okay with all these?
The project is consistent with our land use planning. It's permitted use with site plan review. It's mentioned in our ag and farmland protection plan as a use that's compatible with agricultural uses, so it's.
18, consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. Box is checked no. And there is one right next door to it and I think no is appropriate, correct? Okay, I think we're set with this. So any other questions, board members, before we move on to the resolution? Anything else?
Part one on page nine, the table under E site and setting. Part one on page nine, the table under E site and setting the proposed action. If this, the current acreage is twenty-two point oh four for agricultural, but then it says, I guess there's maybe a point four six of non-vegetative. Is that the difference, guys? I guess that is the difference, okay. I was just wondering, I guess I missed the, the non-vegetative. So, I missed that they added up.
You're good, okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, any other? All right. Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion for negative environmental and, and approval of the site plan, so.
I'd like to add one more condition that I forgot. It's that the applicant will provide project specific training to the fire department at the fire department, if the fire department requests.
Yes, that's not, not in the plan. Do you guys mind?
Oh.
That's fine. Okay, that's perfect.
And that's part of, I mean, you put something in there where we should continue to coordinate with the fire department on the site plan, access. We did widen the road, we increased the burn radius, but maybe, yeah, that's.
Yeah, we've got a first responder lockbox.
Yep.
There's inspection every two years.
Yep.
So, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, John.
Okay, subject to John's concern with the, the fire department, so.
And then you're saying, John, for specific fire department training annually?
As, as they, as.
As the fire department requests?
Exactly, yep. Generally, they'll, they'll probably just want to follow the project, you know. I don't think I'd ask for it annually, but just one of those. Just for things located.
The shut-off is, that's the main thing. Most of, you have to merge and spot these fires, the shut-off. Maybe the empty response needs to, or they could fit the annuals.
Yep.
Quick question on number two with regard to the decommissioning plan. So, we submitted a proposed lot amount, four hundred twenty thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. So, that's there. The clause, a few sentences down, where it talks about what's considered to be abandoned. It's not producing energy or conveying it to the electric grid, it's fifty percent of main capacity for six consecutive months, or any eight consecutive months during the twelve month period. So, was that change in the solar law, or is it just some discretion applied to, to that definition of abandonment?
Yeah, that, that actually came from our, from our attorney from a prior resolution.
Congratulations. I think it's, yeah, just, just wanted to clarify.
And that's, and that's after construction is completed, is the case?
Yep. Okay.
When the calendar of construction.
Correct, once it's commissioned and hoped yet. Any other, any other comments on the conditions?
No.
I thought they were.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion on this, please, someone?
So, me?
Deb?
Second.
Dean, were you second on? Deb and Dean and.
Tom?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And Al.
Yes.
Good, guys, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Good luck on our resolution.
Thank you very much. Well, sure, we'll be, we'll be back. We'll be in town, maybe not with this board, but definitely with the town, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Oh, one, one just a question.
Do you have a set here?
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Do you do milars or?
We don't do milars. Does anybody do milars anymore?
Yeah.
It's, we're trying to figure out what all the three. Did you read through this?
Thanks.
That's Jim. Okay, Joe, we've got some resolutions on subcommittees and rules and regs.
Yes. Which, yeah, you've been a part of two, so. First, I want to do a quick update from the town board. We did two things I think are relevant to this board. One, we approved the Village Solar's lot division, but we added a clause saying we had to finish the sidewalks to the bus station before it took effect, because they're still shuffling their feet on that. And the other is, we got a presentation that's gonna come to you at some point, which is a proposal to put a battery storage system up at the old power plant. I don't know if there's a timeline when that's coming to this board. They just said they're working on it, and they wanted to do a quick presentation.
Do you recall, was that forty megawatts, Joe?
No, no, it's bigger than that.
Four hundred? I know there was.
It's, it's like two hundred and fifty, three hundred, something. It's, it's pretty big.
Yeah.
Where, where are they getting this stuff to store?
They pull it off the grid during the day, when there's peak hours, and they push it back at night when there's no solar on.
Electric thermal storage.
This is just storage. They're not putting panels on it?
Just storage. And they only had, you know, a concept. They didn't have any schematics or anything at this point. I don't know if they've given John more than they gave the town board.
Just the same exact presentation.
So, is, is this used, it's gonna be used in combination with the proposed solar they want to put in there, or?
No, they, they're presenting this as one small project off to the side. They didn't talk about the rest of the site at all.
How about area acreage? How much recall, what that was? I mean, I think it's gotta be pretty good size.
It's pretty good size. It's kind of between the power plant and the woods to the north. There's kind of a grassy field there that they're talking about putting it in.
Not, not on top of the, the.
No.
So, it'll be a new building? They won't use any of the existing structures?
Well, that's a question. They think they're gonna put a bunch of containers there full of.
Containers, yeah.
And our, so, and our law says they can't. And we haven't come to that discussion, because our solar, our law hasn't gotten codified yet. So, when the developer comes and looks at our code, they don't see all the changes we made last April.
Okay. One of the important things for the batteries will be the, the same thing as tonight. They've got to give our first responders training to adequately serve whatever they wind up using for batteries.
So, who, who is doing this?
I forget the name of the.
Bear Peak is the name of the.
I mean, even, even if there was a fire area and some of the nastiness in the battery and draining, like, just like the, the plants, they have a capture area.
Well, chances are, they won't use lead acid, they'll use lithium.
Right.
But still, I, my understanding is that you're.
They're the ones that need special care in a fire or explosion.
Well, even during regular use, they give off carbon monoxide and cyanide gas and stuff. So, there, there's issues there that need to be looked at, for sure.
So, yeah, you have to have a water capture area, and you have to be certainly concerned about an evacuation plan and things like that.
So, they'll have, they'll have stormwater on the site, obviously, right? And the site itself is pretty remote without exposures that can ignite. The individual units themselves, the, the applicant will discuss all that with you in much more intelligent detail than I will, okay? But they're, they're designed to, I met with the applicant a little while after you did, just to get some details. They'll, they're designed to, to prevent thermal runaway, and so that every other unit doesn't set on fire if one does. And they're, they're regulated by computer system to do that. And I, and I'm not sure if I understood this correctly or not, but I think there might be some kind of extinguisher system within the unit themselves, but I'm not clear on that. So, just, my, the reason for this spiel for me is, is that you'll, you'll have opportunity to flesh through all of that, and the applicant will be able to speak to that intelligently, so.
Is this, is this something that's similar to the huge solar that's going on in terms of state control, Joe? Or what's the local control on this type?
This is, this is all you. This doesn't go through our, as I don't know if they do battery at all, or if there's a size.
Just generating. They just do generating facilities. I don't think they do touch storage.
I don't think so.
So, this is all at the, at the local control. It's, our local law does have, you know, just like it does with small scale solar projects. We have, well, what we consider to be larger scale solar projects, well, it's taken us into smaller. Our, our local laws do have specific standards for battery energy storage, storage as well.
So, when you anticipate that, Joe?
They didn't give a date. I don't know if they gave one to you, John?
No, they didn't.
We just got a real brief overview, and if you look at the tape, you can see the overview. Well, you can't, because he didn't do a presentation. He handed it all out to us on paper.
But I can actually, I have it via PDF.
Okay.
And Tom Clark is actually pending that to the board minutes.
Okay, so you can look at the minutes, or do you want to just say?
I can send this, send it out to you folks.
It might not hurt. It, it's a real general overview. You get a map that says we're gonna put it right here, but you don't have any details at all.
It's exciting, the idea of put that land to use.
It is.
That we can tax people for.
Well, and, and, you know, take some land that's, you know, industrial and not been used, and have a, a good purpose, and it certainly balances with your last presentation, in which, you know, they'll produce more than people need during the day, but then at night, they're not producing anything. So, it, it's a good balance. It's a question of making sure the project fits Lansing's needs, because you don't want an ugly project that's gonna leak contaminants into the lake.
Yeah. Quick question back to Village Solar's.
Yes.
We had talked about numbering as well in buildings.
Yeah, it's harder to push that, because it's not in a resolution that I can enforce and say, the bus stop, that's in the local law as part of the PDA. They have to do it. They've had to do it for the last two years. They've been shuffling their feet on it, so I could push that. I, I did talk with our attorney about these things, and, yeah.
Did they give you any response?
They weren't even here.
No, they weren't? Okay.
Sure, just, yeah, just to follow up with the PDA. Do they already have a full CO on that site, specific about?
Building by building.
Because that's usually some of the way of giving, of giving a take to the town or forest.
Let's just say this was not the best done PDA. It's been chopped apart. It's been amended, I don't know, four or five times.
It's, I mean, it was two different developments that were consolidated. It's, it's very difficult to piece, piece this thing together into something that's a lot of tape, so it's just difficult.
Yeah.
It's, it's, we'll, we'll do it differently should they come to us with another PDA. Let's just put it that way.
Or, or any other.
Well, I, I think it just, for us to keep in mind, should there be another development such as this, that numbering and directional information to and from the buildings is something we as a planning board have got to keep in mind and bring up.
And, and, you know, in all fairness, some of it came about after things. So, the bus stops were on Warren Road. They got moved into the development after the development was, I don't know, half done, three quarters done, something like that. But we didn't stop and say, let's review the PDA and do new sidewalks based on a new location of the bus stops. And so, there's a process there in which things happened outside the PDA that affected the design of the PDA, and we didn't take the time to step back and say, let's redesign things more carefully.
I mean, they, they even have a overall site map, but it's on the north end. Have you noticed that? It's way on the north end at the end of the dead end road. It should be, it should be in the beginning of the entrance, or at least next to the community center, somewhere where you can recognize it. It's like, like out in the middle of nowhere.
Should be able to entry roads, streets.
I, I'm sure they're gonna come to us with another PDA, and I think that will be an opportunity to learn from our mistakes going through this one, and produce one that's much more user friendly for both the emergency workers, the community, and the residents involved, and hopefully make it more streamlined for the developer too, because it can't be easy for them to keep coming back here and saying, I'd like to amend this, I'd like to amend this, because they didn't think through all the necessary elements at the beginning.
Yeah. Generational ownership was also a piece of this, that hopefully won't be in the future. And there's separate ownership as well. It's not all owned by, by one. Grandpa had this.
Yep.
It's difficult.
So.
Where's the next one, like, D?
Next door.
Next door.
Oh.
Right next door.
Contiguous.
They're, they're, they're already discussing it. I don't know if they've come to the town at all.
They haven't come for anything official, but I've heard from you, scrumblings.
I'm sure we'll see one of them next. Well, when this one starts to come to an end, they're gonna want to have their crew working on the next one, so.
Yeah.
They, they ought to come to us quickly, because this is not a PDA. It's gonna be approved in three months. So, back to. It'll stop making noise. Back to the proposal that you started with, which is a discussion of how to revamp committees within the town. The idea is to put some consistent rules and operations within the committee, so we don't have one committee saying we operate this one, another one that's very similar operating very differently, and trying to streamline how information flows, so you don't have one committee working on one project, another working on a completely different project that contradicts the first one. And we see this a lot in terms of the land use stuff. If we're going to redo the zoning, we all should be focused on the same part of the town, not one of us working on RA, one of us working on industrial, and thus not really working as a team.
It's a board name.
Yeah, and that's why everything's pushed back to the town board, so we don't have people going in different directions. Everything comes from the town board, and hopefully, us on the town board will give you all consistent directions.
I'm wondering, Joe, have you guys thought about calendar at all, whether you do, like, an extended session? Or you probably have a lot of stuff, you have a lot of stuff right at the beginning of the year, because obviously, you're having to make appointments at the beginning of the year. And some of the considerations may be, you know, who you're going to recommend to liaison from some of these committees to some of the boards. So, for instance, I think we've been asking as a board for their liaison or, like, really good communication on some specific things with the conservation advisory committee, because we're looking for their input on things like vegetative buffers and getting a million this presentation to go into our local law, you know, to, to make it easier for everybody to expect.
I, I, that should continue. I, I'm not trying, we're not trying to supersede that. What we're trying to keep is the CAC looking at one zoning district for a revision, and the town looking at a different one, because Ruth's working with them, I'm working with you, and suddenly, we're not quite on the same page, because we didn't catch up with each other that we're doing, that we're starting to plan this.
But, but this is calling out that Tom, for instance, would not be able to be on this board and the CAC.
He would on, he would, but not in the same way that he's on this board. Just like I'm on the, I'm on the town board. I'm a liaison to this committee, but I don't sit up here with you. I don't deliberate with you. I come here, I'll answer questions for you, I'll bring things to you that I think are a concern from the town board, but I don't serve on the board. And that's, that's how it would have to work with the CAC. You have someone who would not deliberate, would not participate in the discussions, but would bring information back and forth.
See, I, I was confused reading this with, with the conflict and liaison. So, Tom was, he determined it was a conflict, but Deb is on the trails, and Christine is on the egg, so I don't, I don't get the difference here.
Um, okay, um, the difference is whether a board is giving you a official recommendation. And what happens with Tom being on the CAC is Tom is on a board that will give you a recommendation to do something. And that gives Tom this kind of double dipping position of he can craft the recommendation in a way that this board will then probably follow through with it. And so, he's basically giving the recommendation to himself. The ag committee doesn't do that kind of recommendation to this board. The ag committee will give you input of, this is our concerns, but they don't say to this board, we think you should change this, we should, think you should do that. So, you don't have Christine making recommendations to this board through the ag committee, whereas Tom would be making recommendations to this board through the CAC. And that's, that's where the problem is, is when they, when you have informal recommendations coming from one group to the other, you can't have somebody serving on it, on the both, because they're making recommendations themselves.
Right.
Does that sound like what's happening with you?
So, you do say that the town board will be the sole, will be their sole discretion on whether you get a liaison and who will be.
Yes, which it is now.
So, that, so that's something that we would, since we're not gonna have Tom on the CAC, and here's a board member.
Well, you could have Tom on the CAC the way I'm on this board. And I think that's something that we didn't make clear when we originally put the CAC together, is Tom roles had, Tom's role had to be very different.
Than the normal.
Than everybody else on the board.
Okay.
And the same with Ruth, because she's a liaison to the CAC, but she can't be a participating member in the same way. And I think that's one of the things we're trying to straighten out here, is cleaning that out, because if you muddy it up too much, then you, you put the town at risk for somebody saying, this was not done properly, and, yeah.
So, basically, you have to have those liaisons kind of stacked up and ready to go, so you can just approve those as part of your first board meeting at the.
Yeah, but we need to first make it clear what the liaison position means, because it wasn't clear before, and that's, that's one of the things we're trying to clean up here, because that, that got to be a mess that was a real problem for Tom, and we don't want to repeat that.
John, you okay? You look a little perplexed.
Oh, no, listen. I definitely have questions about it, but this, this isn't the forum for it. I'll hack it up and code-eraser.
I have one question.
Sure.
Joe, I don't know whether you have or you will be vetting these changes with relationship of how the state law directs the relationship between the town boards and the planning boards because they have specific things that are, that are trying to keep the two completely separate. And will you have counsel vetting that to see that we're not getting in any trouble here?
Guy drafted this version. You know, it was me and Bronwyn working with him on concepts and Guy actually did the drafting and I'm, I'm hoping Guy makes sure that we don't make any of those mistakes.
That's why I'm asking the questions because I know a lot about construction. I've been in it for 56 years and I can still make mistakes.
Yes.
So, that's why I'm asking the question to see if Guy didn't vet this with the state regulations.
We're definitely going between the state law and the town law because the town law has specific things that the planning board has to do and we're making sure that we're not changing those or, you know, undermining those. And so, yes, we've been going back and forth between state, town law to make sure this is consistent with those requirements. And Guy did make a couple of mistakes that we found and, you know, have corrected and there might be more. I mean, that's why, that's where we're coming to you and saying, "Are you seeing anything that you don't think's going to work?" Because we want to get it as good as we can at this point.
I looked at it and about 60% of what I saw was actual codification of the way that we've been doing things for the past couple of years anyway. And that was my only question about it is how does, how does it fit with the separation of the state requires between the planning board and the town board.
Well, that's part of why we saw the problem with Tom on the C I C and we're trying to codify that. And that's, that's some of the changes that we're doing. This is not supposed to be a radical. We're going to do everything different. This is supposed to take what we're doing, keep what's working, and fix what's not working and fill in the gaps that are missing.
So, yeah, I think somewhere in here, I think I was reading about when the town board is doing interviews like for planning board position.
Yes.
That the chair of the planning board would be involved.
Yes.
Only with, only with approval or recommendation by the town board is the way it reads.
Is that how it reads? I, it's been, it's been a few months since I've read it, so...
I don't, personally, I think the, there should be representative from the planning board and on the zoning board, there should be representative with the zoning board. It shouldn't be up to the town board to say, "Okay, we'll allow you this time to have somebody here, but next time we're not going to allow you."
And the C I C was asking that they have other members be allowed to be a part of that. I mean, yeah, part of it is an interesting question because the way these interviews happen is we set up a series of questions. The chair asks the questions. We all listen to the responses, watch the person, but we don't actually do a dialogue back and forth.
The chair, meaning the chair of the town board?
Yeah, yeah.
Because that was really what my thought was about, was about questions. So, the way, when we had interviewees in here last time, Al said, "Hey, everybody come up with your questions." So, we went around and we all asked specific questions that we had that other people didn't ask. And it would seem to me that that would be a similar process moving forward is that Al would come to the board and say, "Okay, prepare your questions. Give them to me." And then he would work with the town board to do the interviews. We would not be there as a board, but he would be as the chair and then he would have the opportunity to ask the questions that are coming from each member of this board.
So, you would entertain the zoning board or the planning board to assemble those questions and then representative from the board would participate with the town board during the interviews?
Well, I think, I think the supervisor would still ask the questions. You're getting into formulating the questions. And I think it's a good idea to get questions from this board to go into that process.
These, these folks did an outstanding job during the interview. Everyone had a different question and, and I thought they were all relevant and right to the point. They were very good questions, but they all did.
But it's not just the, it's not just the questions that are relevant. It's how the questions are answered.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And I think, having been on this board, we know, my goodness, somebody said that. That's going to be a problem, but it might be, it might be a subtlety that if you've not been in these kind of deliberations, the town board would not recognize.
Very good point, Deb.
Well, I think the town board really felt that, this process, because when we were first discussing how to do this, we had this high break committee of a couple of people from the planning board, a couple of people from the town board. And when the town board sat through the interview process, they said, "Wow, that was really informative seeing people answering the questions as opposed to just, you know, hearing, hearing about their response or anything." And so, the town board unanimously said, "We want to be a part of the interview process from now on because we found it very helpful in deciding." It was really clear. It helped clarify who we wanted and who was not going to work out as well. And so, I think that's important since we're the body who actually makes the decision. I think what you're saying is we should add in something about how the questions are formulated, which I think is a good idea. I think getting...
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that in-person and live and in-real-time response and analysis of the kind of answers somebody gives is something that requires a bunch of contextual and experiential knowledge.
Right, right.
The town board does not have.
Right. So, what Deb is saying, and I agree 100%, is that...
Or you want to translate the professor actually?
We, you know, from our experience here, how somebody has an answer, we can interpret that answer as good or bad or in-between where the town board members may not have the same experience that we have. Am I, I don't know how to phrase it better.
So, what are you proposing?
At least a couple of people on the, on the planning board participate in the interview. Not put it on the head of just one person.
Okay. Well, that's similar to what the C I C is saying. So, I'm getting some push back in that direction. I think what we want to do, I think it's going to be hard to have everybody come to these meetings because it becomes...
I would agree with that, but I think that what Deb's saying is very true. I mean, this that if you have two or three people, including the chair, and they were there to hear and see the responses and then they would be able to get together with, with the chair and say, "Here's, based on the responses we saw, these would be the recommendations that we would give to, to the town board." I'm not sure what your process is from the time, in terms of timeline, from the time you actually do the interviews to when you make your decisions.
Well, what I'm hearing, I think the term is, a number of planning board members, less than a quorum, because once you hit a quorum, you start to have other issues that pop up in terms of, you know. So, I think saying less than a quorum is important. And the way we did it last time, and I think it probably is the way we do it in the future, is after the last applicant came and did their presentation, answered the questions, we discussed it in closed session. And so, I think that's where the participation happens is, you know, the planning board members have come, participate in that discussion, you know, bring the viewpoints, but then, you know, obviously the town board will make a decision at some point thereafter. So, I think what I'm hearing is a process in which the board in question submits questions to be asked that a number of the board members, less than a quorum, can participate in the after discussion, discussion with the board.
Well, participate to listen to the...
Yeah, listen, listen.
As well as participate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then the town board will, at that some point thereafter, and I don't want to tie it down too hard, make a decision.
Joe, I have to put two final point out. Basically, what you're saying is the same thing that we did. We interviewed everybody. Every, each individual got asked the same questions.
Yes.
From each person. Then we went into closed session and discussed it. We don't mind spending the time, however you want to structure it, because we think it's very important also for the people who are on the board, no matter who they are at that particular time, to get an insight on dealing with people that will be coming on the board. It's an introduction. It's better than walking in from the street and say, "Hi, now I'm on the board." At least it gives the members of the sitting board a little opportunity to see what the folks are like.
Uh-huh.
Under pressure because I, I was, you know, that interview process is not a low-pressure situation. So, that's, that's useful. And we don't mind spending the time. I just wanted to make that.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
Having done this recently, I would suggest that you're, you're not wrong that, that having spent some time with all of you in preparation. I mean, I prepared time, weeks before. I was spending time listening to what was going on, how things were being presented. I spent some time with all of you, answering your questions and making you feel hopefully comfortable with my responses. And then meeting with the town board, I didn't find that process to be any more unusual than you would get in any other job or position. Yes, it takes extra time, but I think you're right. I think there is some value to, I think, getting to know a little bit about. We had, I had an opportunity to get asked questions as well. So, it gave us a little bit of dialogue. So, we had to know each other a little bit prior to, and it's not like we need to know each other well, but, you know, it's, it gave us a few, a few opportunities to interact. And I think that it made it more comfortable for me, and I don't know how anybody else feels, but for me, to come and sit down and join the group.
I can't remember. Did the town board let you ask us questions?
You did. It's fine if I had questions. Yeah.
Yeah. But certainly I would have an easier time on the town board answering the questions about how the planning board works than the other four members.
Yes. So, I think from, from having recently done this, it's not, it's not a negative experience to have one interview and then, then the other, which gives you the opportunity to also, you know, put in your thoughts to how you, you know, who you thought, you know, from the candidates were, were good selections.
So, I will note, other applicants felt that was a burden.
See, I didn't necessarily think it was.
John, Al, have you got a comment? Would it be bad?
I don't think I have a comment right now. It's still a little fresh in my mind. I should pull off.
But I'm definitely hearing that we need to get more on board. And I'm, I'm using you as a sample, but same thing with the Z B A, same thing with C I C. You know, these are going to be across the board because that's part of the point of this process is to have all of these happen the same way, not have, you know, the planning board process happen one way, Z B A happen a completely different way because that doesn't work for the town. So, when I say it's all of them. It sounds like you want more input. I'm not sure if we're going to go with the planning board doing a full interview and the town board doing a full interview. So, I wouldn't be opposed to it. I'm just worried that that's a lot of, it's a lot of extra time for staff and for you that I'm not sure what it would really bring us forward. I like the idea of having less than a quorum coming and participating in the discussion and even letting you guys choose who those members are.
Joe, I think one thing, as we think about generating questions, I think that it would be helpful for us to potentially, as a board, every board member here being able to see all the applications.
I think you have to in order to generate your questions.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, I think those are really good changes that need to get incorporated in.
So, we have seven? Is our normal?
No, it's not normal.
Ruth?
Five voting members?
Oh, I thought we got half.
We have seven voting members.
We have seven voting members.
With that, seven voting members and two alternates. So, we could potentially have three would be less than a quorum.
Right.
And what's the Z B A staffed up to? How many?
Is it three?
They have five.
They have five, so they could have two.
Yeah.
They currently have vacancies.
Yeah, but you, the vacancies count as a space. You know, the quorum thing still counts.
So, can we ask now as I would think, will that's two years or is that?
Well, there will be a position. The two alternates, the two alternates are up every year.
Every year.
And one board member is up every year. And we open it up for seeing who's available each of those times.
Who's, who's up next again, you are at the end of the year? I mean, I've been on over 10 years and we've had a really good working. Everybody's got along very, very well. Larry, you've been a lot longer than me, but overall the years I've been here, the four, everybody's got along very well.
There are a lot of different opinions on the board and we're all able to work together. I think that everybody that's sitting now has one thing as a general issue. We want to do the best we can for the town. And we're concerned about any action that we have that could induce additional costs on the town. We, we just, you know, it seems to work out pretty well.
Yeah. I, I think this board's really trying hard and I appreciate it. And this is not a criticism of the board. This is a criticism of our process of working with the boards. And that's what this is about, is saying, "The town board has not been managing this whole process well." And we need to put a structure in to clean up the way it's been working because, you know, the, the way the planning board has been getting appointments and the way the C I C has not been the same. And that's, that's not a good process for the town to have different processes happen. And so, we want to change that.
Well, there is a bit of difference between the planning board and the C I C in purview of what we do also.
Right. But their relationship to the town board is very similar. They're both state structured committees.
Yeah. They're a standing general committee and we're a standing general board.
Yeah. And, and we need to treat them in the same way. And that's part of what this is trying to do is say, "We need to get our, we, the town board, need to get our house in order and start, you know, treating all these boards in a similar way and not having a kind of, you know, ad hoc, this is how they do it. This is how they do it." Because that, that's where problems develop.
So, Joe, do you think timeline-wise that we need to have the applications advertised and come in sooner? We, I know we did have some applications where people didn't show up and then it seemed like we had some applications, maybe that were kind of late in the game? It wasn't my rodeo. I, I think that was still CJ.
I think there were two that didn't show up or two that we heard about that didn't show up.
But I don't know that we got all of the applications in the same.
No, we didn't.
You know, I would, I would point out that there is a difference between the planning board and the C I C and that, you know, one has discretionary approval authority and the other has advisory. That is a, that is a big difference, which in my mind probably would warrant some different treatment.
And they do have slightly different rules for each of them, but I think some, some consistency needs to be across the board.
And I don't know, Joe, if there's any statutory requirement on when you can start receiving applications and how long a period or any of that kind of stuff. So, if the rules are up to us, then I would say the same thing. You want to have some consistent rules you put in place that gives us enough time to generate questions, you enough time to make decisions.
Uh-huh. And staff enough time to process everything that's coming through. And that's, that's, I see John's got...
I was just saying, do you want to close the meeting so staff can go if they want to like to go to the meeting?
This is a formal meeting and so they have to keep minutes of it because you've got a quorum here.
But thank you.
But we're not...
I do appreciate that.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter what, it doesn't matter whether it's voting or not. This is a formal meeting of the board with a quorum discussing town business. So, I'm sorry.
It's okay. We appreciate the mercy, though.
Julie noted, it just felt this more discussion item versus an action item. I do always like on the agenda when it says what the actions are. So, do we approve for the solars to go back, kind of, the speaker or the whole project?
Whole project.
All right. Yeah. Just make it format of the activity action.
I, I think that was just a typo that they forgot to put the action items in there.
Okay, Joe, if, if the planning board members have any other comments, when's the last date to get back to you on this?
I don't know.
Okay. So, there's still time?
There's still, there's totally still time. I'm not trying to rush this through. I'm trying to get input. I haven't gotten a lot of input from staff, which, you know, I want because this affects them as to how they deal with each of these committees. And I haven't heard from the Z B A yet and I want to get input from everybody. It's not how quickly can we get this through. It's can we get this right before we pass it?
To change direction, I mentioned this to John real quickly. Again, last year we went to the last minute as far as we were regurgitated with whatever, the sexual harassment or whatever the town requirements. Can we do like a video, watch a video and then have open discussion and set that aside one night where the town board members, the planning board members, the zoning board members attend it and we get it done and over with in the fall?
I would like to get that, that was supposed, the plan was to have that done in the winter so that we don't have, you know, if anyone drags out, we can catch them in the summer or something. But there's been a lot of stuff in the office.
We still got to do it, right?
Yes. I still have to do it.
We all have to do it. We have to do it once a year.
Yeah, but I mean, we haven't done it yet. We should, we were supposed to have done it like three months ago.
Well, I think there was a slight problem with the PERMA thing not being compliant with New York State.
Well, I, I don't like doing it on the internet. I don't know about the rest of you folks. What do you, I, I would rather just do it, have an open meeting.
You can do it by chat.
I just, I just assume do it here. I just assumed do it here, like we did that one time, but if that's impossible, I don't have any problem doing it on the internet.
If you're bringing pizza, great, otherwise I'm a depths, rubbing her feet.
That's covered in the video, Dean.
I think you have to have the potential for both because, you know, there was that time where Larry was out with knee surgery and I would like to be able to hand him a video and say, here, here's how you can do it because you can't come in for a few weeks.
Well, I was out, I was out with back surgery, but I did, I did one of them on the internet, but I can, I can, I'll get a wheelchair coming.
Well, I want that, I want that ability because there are situations where that's really necessary.
But can we kind of shoot for a date, like I say, in October? Put a date in October, let's set it, get somebody in here to show a video, to answer any questions and then we get it done and over with.
I'm with you there and I've been asking about that too and I know you want to get it over with as well because, I don't know, have you got-
We are getting it over with. We actually, my department's going to be closed on October eighth where we're gonna do our training, oh, sorry, thank you, August, to do our training together. But we can, that'll just be a video for us. So it sounds like you're requesting like an in-house person to come in and do their required video training and then answer any questions and lead discussion. And you'd better do that with one, one meeting for all the boards. That's what it sounds like.
I think you're gonna have to schedule two meetings because everyone's not gonna make it on the same date, but anybody can come to any date.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, that's what we did last year, right? Yeah, we had two.
I don't remember what we did last year.
So as the A's on, would you feel comfortable hitting Mary Ellen up to coordinate that?
I've already been hitting Mary Ellen up and saying we need to move forward on this because, you know, the plan was to have this done in the winter because that gave everybody plenty of time to like, oops, I didn't catch that meeting, I couldn't make either of them, how can I make this up and, you know.
So once it gets to Thanksgiving, it's down to the wire?
Well, yeah, and I don't want to be like saying you can't be on the board because you didn't finish your training until, you know.
Well, you wouldn't be able to be on the board because you didn't finish yours either.
Yeah, and, you know, I'm asking to finish mine.
So we all have, we all have additional training to do besides the towns require training. I think Tom, you're taking a class soon, is that what I heard? Do you have a class sign now? No? Oh, you have a class.
I'm doing the learn at lunch, I love it. Perfect.
Yeah, because you've got sexual harassment, workplace violence prevention and the-
The power credits.
Or two that are related.
And then there's the other one the town requires of, you know, how to work with the community better requirements.
The other difficult people.
Yes.
Yeah, I did that one online.
We can run that OJ too.
Okay, Joe, anything else from you?
Well, that one John, I think, has to work together for this group because that's specifically for the planning board.
Yes. And then also, Al, you requested that we give you guys a breakdown of your, who's, who needs training.
When you get a chance.
Yeah, we'll provide that and then any opportunities that we're aware of for you folks to get your full-on training.
You said real estate licenses can sometimes do that training?
Just submit what you've got, I mean, it's-
I've got a real estate license and an associate broker, so I'm gonna spend a lot more time for that.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure I'm good because I get an A hours at the conference.
Yeah, you're good with that.
Do I submit all the training I have to do for Cornell?
It depends on what it's on.
If you did the workplace violence and the sexual harassment prevention, that counts. You can just submit a thing saying I did it at Cornell and you're awesome in the town.
It gets very confusing with all your training.
Joe, anything else from you?
Unless you guys have more questions, I'm also-
John, I got one more quick question that came, I was gonna bring it, I forgot to bring it up this morning when I saw you. Somebody approached me. Across the street, Salt Brewery, they've got a bandstand up now.
We're aware of it, reviewing their current approval to see how that lines up and if they need to come in for a site plan.
Right, that was my question. I think they have to come in. I think the public needs to be able to, the neighbors need to comment on that. It's past experience, we've always set, what, a ten o'clock time prime on?
Yeah.
We try to.
We tried, we were told that we couldn't. What's that?
That's correct. Yeah, you can't, you can't regulate the internal operations of a business like that by setting a time.
But no ways we can.
What's that?
No ways we can.
Well, we've done it on all the other ones we've set a time, right?
They've always agreed to it.
We've requested, we've suggested, requested that they acquiesce. But the neighbor should be able to comment on music after ten o'clock.
Well, they should also be able to comment on the placement of the bandstand.
What's that?
They should be able to comment on placement of the bandstand. Maybe it needs to move over four feet for some reason that I can't fathom, but-
So if it's a change to the site plan that, and our code has sort of specific, well, you know, like if white water is required, but if it's a change in the site plan that kind of rises to a certain extent, then it needs to-
Vegetation, whatever.
For a site plan.
And I didn't go by it, but somebody told me their car's parked all over the road one night when they had a band there.
I didn't see, I saw the bandstand car.
They weren't on the main road? Oh, I heard it. Were you there?
No, but I ride all the time and there's never anybody parked on the main road.
No, this is when they had the band on the bandstand outside one night.
No, there's never anybody parked on the main road.
No?
They've got a lot of parking there because they gravelled a huge section of that field so they could park cars on it.
So is that where they were parked down there?
Yeah, 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 all the way back.
I heard there were cars parked on both sides of the road. Somebody-
I didn't see it either.
No.
Okay.
But I saw the bandstand and wondered because I don't remember it being part of the site plan.
I did, I do.
There's worse problems to have than a successful business that runs out of parking. Especially, especially in central New York, upstate New York.
It's good to have a successful business.
I believe they are closed by nine thirty.
We just need to have some of our band room right here. When you have a band out there?
We almost did.
Close that, sorry. You know what's late with that, Joe, is there-
I haven't heard any of the, I haven't heard of one.
All right, so any other questions? Joe? John?
What's happening with Dandy?
You guys approved it. They've got three years. They have three years to break ground or three years to finish?
I thought it was eighteen months.
Three years to finish.
Yeah, three years for some change. I wanted to bring up with the Route thirty-four Dollar General, exterior building, looks like it's pretty well done, parking lot's paved, and I'm assuming that we followed the recommendation of the board in terms of parking spaces, but haven't seen any vegetated plantings yet other than the grass. And so if you drive into their driveway, turn around, go to drive out, we know that that ditch line there tends not to drain very well. Well, that means it also grows a ton of cattails and you don't have to be concerned if you're pulling out to go nor as much, I guess, but boy, if you're pulling out to the south, you can't see anything coming from the south. The vegetation is so high.
Is it really, yeah?
Yeah, so the highway department needs to scoop it out or do something, but there's no visibility there whatsoever. I'm driving a minivan, so not super-
Up there, the, up across, thirty-four across from the fire department is what you're-
No, thirty-four B, the new one.
Oh, the new one?
The new one.
Okay.
So not-
That project isn't finished yet, they haven't, they're not, they haven't gotten-
I'm just saying, we need to be aware of that.
Yeah, I don't think they installed their planting, their stormwater plantings, they haven't done, because they have a lot of work yet to go before they're ready to go.
Exactly, just saying, this is what I see at this point in there.
Yeah. You have line of sight very poor?
I have that coming out of Conne Road, there's, yeah.
I mean, there's, there's cattails.
Cattails on the-
You can't see it.